Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Owen, do you have a form, Madam Chair?
All right, well, before we adjourn for the public hearing, just the superintendent will tell us about this that we just got.
Sure, good evening, everyone. I have passed out to all the board members, I think most of the public, but there's more copies out there as well, plus this is on board docs. This is just the latest iteration of the budget spreadsheet we've been looking at. As a refresher, everything in red is a change since the initial proposal. If it's red with no highlights, it was the first round. If it's red with yellow highlights, it was the second round of changes. And if it's red with green highlights, it's the third round of changes that the board made at our most recent meeting. So you'll see, for example, on the first page, the increase of the 3% raise to a 4%, and then the commensurate change to the budgeted amount. So you'll see that throughout the document. I think that's it.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and see. There may be people who come in later for the public hearing, but I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and convene a public hearing on the superintendent's proposed budget and also the 2020-2025 CIP budget. So if you would like to comment on any part of the budget, now would be a good time to come on up and sign in. Or are you all just here to watch? Nobody's here to address us. We got one, okay. Are you ready?
What's the time? I'll do it. What's your time? Why do we usually do five minutes first? No, that's where your public comment appears. You want to do three minutes or two minutes?
About three minutes. How does that sound?
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
I want to support fully funded schools.
Okay, start with your name.
Meredith Thompson.
Okay.
And I have a fourth grader in Richmond Public Schools. I want to start by saying I want to support fully funded schools. But I also want us to be very careful that we're not throwing good money out after bad, and this budgetary process has done very little to instill confidence that that's not Anytime I heard repeatedly board members asking for requested detailed budget items, I heard the administration say, "These things are going to require more time than we have, and we could provide some ballpark figures." Those are actual quotes from Mr. Kameras. If you're going to ask for $42 million more, then I think you need better than just some line items. We need some detailed cost analysis. How, I don't know, how did these numbers get arrived to? Do you know? Because I don't. If you do, I would love somebody to share with me. How are you, how do you arrive upon $1 million for the STEM program? Where's that number come from? How much do STEM programs typically cost? Where is the budgetary plan for the STEM program? In 2018, there was a scathing audit that recommended an audit committee comprised of school board members and community members with finance experience. Did you do that? No. So how do you know you need $42 million more? How do you know that the money that you're spending now is going where it should and for what it should? Frankly, I think that if you vote for this budget without these questions being answered, it's an abdication of fiduciary responsibility and oversight. Here's my other concern is we spent six months on the rezoning process, the culmination of which was to, that you all voted for two magnet schools, and then you punted the funding on that. You're not providing $42 million extra dollars and not $1 is being earmarked for the magnet schools? That was the culmination of six months of rezoning discussions? Why? No money for Carver? Not one dime has been earmarked in the budget? I don't understand. I just don't understand.
30 seconds.
You say that you're prioritizing teachers, but then you extend the subs. I just think that we need to do better. I want to do good, but I want to spend money on Richmond City Public Schools, but I want to make sure that the money is going where it needs to and that I know as a taxpayer that it's being handled responsibly, and I don't see how that's being done with this budgetary process. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ansley Perkins. I have a couple comments this evening. I'm a strong supporter of quality engagement and have expressed previous concerns to this board that some of the community engagement appears to be focused on quantity instead of quality. Tonight is an example of such. I have long been a proponent of having more than one public hearing on the proposed budget. I appreciate that we have two hearings this year. I do, however, believe it does a disservice to the speakers and this board by having it on the same night as the board's vote on the budget. The board can't be expected to meaningfully digest the public comments and still make a vote on the same evening. My other comment is regarding the budget proposal for trauma-informed leads. I fully appreciate the administration's desire to increase this capacity at each school. How a high-need school system such as RPS with a student population of approximately 25,000 can have just 39 full-time social workers is both stunning and disappointing. As someone who has spent most of her professional career working in the human services field, this is really intense and challenging work. The proposed budget line item for me feels like another Band-Aid solution. There is a trauma-informed network of providers for the greater Richmond area. Wouldn't that money be better spent through a collaboration or contract work with individuals from this network who have had extensive training and experience providing trauma-informed care? When it comes to this need, I am not a fan of the Band-Aid approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Ms. Owen, Ms. Burke, Mr. Kameras, members of the board. My name is Aniku Ramril. I'm a Chimborazo parent. I have a second grader and a kindergartner at Chimborazo, and I'm here to advocate for a full-time Spanish teacher position at Chimborazo Elementary along with a full-time instructional assistant. This issue is very close to my heart, and I do believe that it is also beneficial for all children in RPS. And I must say that learning foreign languages was part of my childhood, which is why I'm very proud to be in a school district, the only one in the greater Richmond area that provides elementary school foreign language instruction. I just recently discovered that our own guidance counselor at Chimborazo, Ms. Stallings, had started learning Spanish in RPS Elementary School in the '60s, and this tradition just surprised me and fascinated me, and I'm just, I want to say thank you for continuing this. And I want to advocate for Chimborazo on behalf of the PTA and myself. Unfortunately, Chimborazo Elementary has not had foreign language instruction for the last three years. I'm aware that it was because of the unfilled part-time position, and we see the necessary step to make this happen is opening up the position into a full-time. Full-time positions are more desirable for qualified, trained, and experienced teachers, and we want to make sure that this position is going to be filled. As you're aware, Chimborazo Elementary is an IB program, has been authorized as an IB school for five years, and unfortunately will not be reauthorized this fall if foreign language instruction is not going to take place. A full-time Spanish teacher can make a deeper impact on the school's life, on the school's life and the children's life, the whole school's climate. They have the capacity to make language learning more meaningful and relevant inside and outside the classroom. At Chimborazo, we have a new Pampa relationship with a school in Ecuador, and a full-time teacher would have the capacity to maintain that and potentially reach out into other schools here in Richmond with high-
30 seconds.
-Hispanic population. So my reasons are twofold. Two-fold, one is that our accreditation, I mean, sorry, our reauthorization depends on the full-time filled position, and also I believe that this is the right thing for our children at the 21st century. It has been, we know the benefits of foreign language instruction worldwide, and our children deserve this. Thank you for attention and thank you for considering it.
Thank you.
Ma'am, did you sign in?
I did not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Janie Bauker. Sorry for the kids, we had a childcare plan that didn't quite work out. I've been doing my best to follow this budget process, and I'm looking forward to going to city council to ask them to fund RPS's proposal. I would like to reiterate the importance of making sure the fundamentals are covered first, including raises for our teachers and providing our schools as much staffing support as possible. As much as funding all of dreams for RPS would be incredible, it seems imperative to cover the basics first. As a newcomer to the budget process, I may be missing something, but I nevertheless wanted to share a couple observations so far. It seems rather problematic that the superintendent put forward a $40 million-plus-billion-dollar budget increase that, as I understand it, is unlikely to be fully funded. It's baffling to me because we just emerged from a rezoning process where the superintendent was pushing for a pretty expensive pairing plan, seeming to brush aside concerns of how that would be funded, but the budget process seems to demonstrate those concerns were reasonable. It also seems to inhibit transparency and effective public engagement that the administration would put forward a budget increase that is so unlikely to be funded by City Hall. It would be a better starting place to have a budget with a good likelihood of being funded so that when the public and the board review documents, recommendations and thoughts are more rooted in reality. Do you want to read?
No.
Okay. Finally, I realize the permanent substitute position was cut, but in my personal experience, a lack of subs causes significant disruption and upheaval for teachers and, more importantly, the kids. With that in mind, I'll just echo that please put frontline interests first, put forward a budget that's responsible, prudent, and impactful, and I'll do my best to help fight for every dollar and resources from all of our kids from our city council. I'm going to say thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address us at this time about the budget? Okay, well, if anyone comes in later, we will certainly welcome their comments as well. So do I need to adjourn that one? And, okay, so I will adjourn the public hearing and reopen our board meeting.
The next item?
Next item?
Is to receive for action the superintendent's proposed FY21 budget and the 2020-2025 CIP budget.
I guess we can't approve it until after 6:30. So the public hearing was noticed for 6:30, so I don't think we can do any action things until after that, but we can have a conversation if there's any conversation to be had. We've talked a lot lately, but...
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the couple of speakers noted rezoning, and I'd sent an email this afternoon, I wanted to make sure that the budget that we have includes any potential impact from a staffing standpoint. I just hope to, you know, to see whatever the documentation that shows, you know, how the staff will be impacted before, now, this year versus next year, considering that many of the schools are going to have, you know, additional students and so forth.
Do you want to talk?
While we'll have differences in terms of student enrollments at particular schools, the total enrollment isn't being changed by rezoning. So, for example, River City will have more students, but Bouchal will have less. So we do not anticipate a net increase in terms of the number of staff. There will be significant movement in terms of where staff are, but that's something we're working through with schools to be able to project and talk with our staffs about, but there won't be a need for additional staff based on the movement of where students are.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kameras. And that was my initial thought, you know, when I was thinking about it. But I guess what I wonder is, is that, you know, there's a certain minimum number of teachers that each school is going to have to have, you know, regardless, so, and so I just, you know, I think it would be important to look at the actual plan after, just to confirm, because, you know, if you still have to have, you know, X number of grades, then, you know, I just, I think it's just important to see what that breakdown looks like.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Ms. Gibson on that point. It's also, also the issue I've brought up in a couple of meetings, and I know that we've discussed at other points as well, is ensuring that economically disadvantaged students who are moving to new schools where they may not receive, I want to ensure that our students who are being moved to schools such as Fox or TJ where there will now be a substantially higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students, I want to ensure that they're receiving supports. So as we discuss what these plans look like with respect to shifting around staff and things of that nature with respect to rezoning, I would like to have further discussion about needs for instructional assistance and things of that nature at other schools that may be impacted.
Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For clarity, so the money follows the child. So there would, there would, there would not be any, I guess, any elimination of services if the money follows the child? I just wanted clarity on that.
Mr. Young, then Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to acknowledge some of the points that were made by our bosses, folks who came in this evening, and though there were few folks that spoke, quality of their remarks outweighed perhaps the quantity of number of speakers, and specifically, I have spoken at long length at past meetings, I'm not going to do it this evening, as it relates to, we addressed, we addressed a, sorry, we addressed a $40 million, or approximately $40 million new ask, but we did very little, if anything, relevant to 400 million, or to be, to be fair, 311 million in the general budget, and I certainly would not want to put words in mouth of anyone who came here this evening, but I think that, I think that largely was the point. So when we do arrive at the point this evening when we have an opportunity to take action, I will be proposing amended, proposed amendments there, too. But I did, right now, want to inquire procedurally, I think we arrived, Madam Chair, I think we arrived at a consensus some time ago, a couple meetings ago, about prioritizing the dollars in the new, the new ask. Again, I'll make the point, I think that's backwards. I'm disappointed that to date we've only reduced the proposal by about $430,000, but I think that that was the impetus for some of what maybe we heard a moment ago, prioritization when folks spoke to, for example, rightfully prioritizing people in the buildings, rightfully prioritizing our teachers, and compensation there, too. So my question for you and for my colleagues is procedurally or pertinent to chronology, what will that look like if my assessment was correct, that we would prioritize the dollars between now and April or May, sometime this spring, when we get another bite at the apple? Because I do think to the point that was made a moment ago, we're going to be back at this, and we are, we are going to have to cut significantly from what I anticipate being adopted this evening. So that was a little editorial, but also a genuine question in there.
Well, Mr. Young, I seem to remember hearing a quotation, I believe, from the Bible, sufficient unto the day is the evil thereof. So I'm not going to try and plan our next meetings tonight, but I know that that is something that we agreed that we were going to do, and so we will.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up on the note that Ms. Page mentioned in terms of the dollars following the students. I think that that does follow, to a certain degree, with Title I funding. However, you know, if the school does not meet a specific benchmark in terms of the percentage, it doesn't always, it doesn't necessarily hold true, to my knowledge, in that direct way. So, yeah, that was the point.
Okay. Dawn, and then Scott.
So, Madam Chair, I'm not going to belabor the point, but, so that statement about funding, the money follows the child, so if child Blair needs certain services, then those services will be there to support their child regardless of the school that they attend. Maybe the superintendent can speak to that.
Okay, and then we'll go to Scott. So go ahead.
Yes, so, for example, if a student had an IEP and gets rezoned to another school, absolutely those services will still be met at the new school. As for title dollars, yes, there's the automatic funding that happens once you meet the 40% threshold, but there is additional funding available for schools that are below that threshold, and we use those funds accordingly right now, and we would continue to do so. So, again, we will make sure that, given whatever the total pie is, that we make sure to meet our students' needs regardless of what school they go to.
Because that's our responsibility and obligation.
Okay, Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I guess, so the point of the title funds, I do think, is important, and I know it's something that we've discussed plenty. We certainly discussed it through the rezoning process about, about situations where schools may not meet those thresholds and how we could apply for additional funds, and they could be burdensome, it could be burdensome to do if you've got a relatively small population because you have to track how those funds are used much more closely. But I also agree with Ms. Page's point and with the administration's point that we just, that we need to continue to work to provide the resources that our students need at these schools, and I hope that as we go through the rezoning, carrying out the rezoning process, we take a close look at what those needs are to make sure that they're being met. Thank you.
Ms. Dorr, and then Ms. Gibson?
Hi, I apologize for being late. I was actually at a Thomas Jefferson rezoning meeting that was on the calendar before this was on the calendar, so I told them that I would be there for a couple minutes to show my support, but I did, was able to listen to the comments and from you all on my drive here. I agree with a couple of things that my colleagues have said. One, I do think that especially for schools in which the economically disadvantaged population is changing, Thomas Jefferson is a school that comes to mind, and Fox Elementary is a school that comes to mind, I want to make sure that we're appropriately serving the new students that are coming into those schools. So I do think that it's a bit about dollar per student, but then there are supports that we need to make sure that we're providing for those populations that they received at their homeschool. So I agree with the desire to have a little bit more clarity around what is the actual plan to make sure that we support effective implementation post-rezoning. And then I also agree with prioritization, and I agree with, you know, my personal prioritization would be the needs that we have in the schools, then the state funding for which we receive a local match, then number three would be existing programs for which we want to continue, and then finally would be new programs that we're starting next year. But that's just my two cents. And then finally, I do think that there's been an ongoing debate while we've been on this board about whether we match our funding request to what we think we're going to get or whether we, whether we request, we provide a needs-based budget. And quite honestly, I don't know if I have the right answer. Year one, we requested more than what we thought we could get. Year two, we matched it to the city's budget, and this year it looks like we're going to create a needs-based budget. I think there are some really valid concerns about creating a realistic budget, but I also think the counterargument to that has a lot of validity as well in that we have to really present our needs to the community, to our legislators, et cetera, and the reality is that even this incremental $40 million is probably not enough to fully satisfy our needs. So I just wanted to offer that context.
I'm just going to say one thing here. Every year, it seems to me, we have, and-
And then, I also agree with prioritization, and I agree with, you know, my personal prioritization would be the needs that we have in the schools, then the state funding for which we receive a local match, then number three would be existing programs for which we want to continue, and then finally would be new programs that we're starting next year. But that's just my two cents. And then, finally, I do think that there's been an ongoing debate while we've been on this board about whether we match our funding requests to what we think we're going to get, or whether we, whether we request, we provide a needs-based budget. And quite honestly, I don't know if I have the right answer. Year one, we requested more than what we thought we could get. Year two, we matched it to the city's budget, and this year, it looks like we're going to create a needs-based budget. I think there are some really valid concerns about creating a realistic budget, but I also think the counterargument to that has a lot of validity as well, in that we have to really present our needs to the community, to our legislators, et cetera. And the reality is that even this incremental forty million is, is probably not enough to fully satisfy our needs. So I just wanted to offer that context.
I'm just going to say one thing here. Every year, it seems to me, we have, and I'm ready to be corrected, we have problems, not problems, but there'll be a, a school where we don't have the expected number of, say, kindergarteners show up, and so we have classrooms that have fewer than really needs. I mean, there might be ten or twelve. And then there's another school that has overcrowded kindergartens, and the administration has to, at that point, move some people around, I mean, in the first couple of weeks of school. And I know it's always kind of jarring, but that's the reality, is you, you think you know, but one of the things that I know, is they don't all get registered before the first day of school. And so there are always some surprises. So I think we can plan as best we can, both for the teachers that we need in the schools, and for the supports that they, that we need in the schools, but it may be that, when we see how many kids we need, you know, we have at TJ and Fox, and in other places, too, that at that time, and during the summer, when we see, and during the spring, when we see, I mean, all that is fluid. We, we know that we want to have, on opening day, exactly the number of kids and teachers in exactly the right place, but I have never, on the first day of school, in the first week of school, known that to happen. So I think the idea is, we will know, and we will adjust accordingly, and it won't be very many, but there'll be a few. But we're flexible, and we can do it. And that's my five cents, maybe. Okay. Kenya was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if we might hear a bit from our new auditor, just in terms of, because, you know, do we, I wonder if we should consider growing, you know, do we have enough auditors? And I just, I would love to just hear any initial thoughts you have, in terms of how things are going, and what do you think our needs are, from an, from an audit standpoint?
Ms. Gibson?
So, good evening, everyone, first off. So, from the standpoint of the current audit shop, so, and just, and I'll be high level as I can be. Currently, based on what we've reviewed so far, with both Latanya and I, the two auditors that are here now, with us being in the shop, things were at a very, ooh, low state. I'll say that. The wish would be, and my hope would be for, and I'll just be honest, is to add probably two more auditors in the future at some point. I'm not sure we're there just yet, because there are a lot of things that still need to be worked out. Likewise, there are still a lot of things within the overall organization that we still need to meet about, as far as with the administration, operations, even down to certain levels, where we're still doing risk assessments and things of that nature, to determine how many auditors we may need, from a man, college, bandwidth standpoint. While, yes, it would be nice to add auditors as soon as next year, but I think that would be a little too soon, to be, I'll be fair and honest. I think that's a little too soon, because concerning and considering a lot of the things that need to go on, on the support side.
Okay, thank you. And the Finance Committee does work with the auditor, and so, as there are needs in that area, I think, through the Finance Committee. Now, there's some people who have come in, and so I wanted to stop and say, if someone has come in who would like to address us about the budget, come right on up and state your name and sign in, please, and you have about three minutes.
My name is Robin Dickerson. I am a, currently, a substitute teacher here in the city of Richmond, and I've been a substitute teacher probably for thirty years. I've done some law, I've done a contract as a full-time teacher. But when I started in Richmond as a substitute teacher, the pay was pretty much the same as what I'm getting now. But as a long-term sub, I would get as much as a hundred and eighty-five dollars a day as a long-term sub, which currently now is one-ten per day as a long-term sub. And I have contracts where I was a contracted long-term sub, and even as a day-to-day sub, if you were put in a, in a job, and it snowed the next day, and the kids were out, you still got paid. That doesn't happen now. So it is hard for anyone, even a, I came to this as a, as a sub, basically, because I was a mother, and I also was a caretaker for my mother. So this was a position where it was easy and convenient for me to make a living. But now, you know one could come to this position as a sub, and make a living, and have a, it's not a decent living wage, and manage to survive in the city with the wages that they are getting as, as a day-to-day sub. So I would like for you to consider that in your budget, to have subs making a decent living wage. And also, you have to consider the responsibilities they have, day-to-day. It is more than just someone coming in to babysit. This is someone who has to have some professional background to deal with the student population we have here in the city of Richmond. So eleven dollars an hour is not a decent wage for a professional person who has to come in and do the, the, the daily routine with our children, and to understand what it needs to do the classroom assignments, and to implement classroom education and academics during the day. So I would like to just make sure that you understand that the subs, because I've been to a meeting here, and it was said that the sub budget was way too much. It's not the sub budget. Your budget that you have teachers who are not there, who you are paying for a sub to be there, that's where your cost is. Your cost is not in the substitute teacher, because we're not making any money.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address us at this time regarding the budget? So, at this time, I will say that we are past the time when we said we would start, and if there's nobody who has come in, then we will continue on with our work tonight. Ms. Page?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's proposed budget FY 2020, '21, and the 2025 CIP budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there discussion? Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If, if the time is right, I think it is, I'd like to, to propose two different amendments. I'll do one at a time, if I may.
Okay.
I would move to provide a one-time bonus to all of our teachers and persons responsible for instruction, an amount of twenty-six hundred dollars, to be paid for by efficiencies enumerated in the documents that have previously provided my colleagues. And then I can speak to that, if, if I may. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Elaborate, Mr. Young.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, it's to, it's, it's to amend, it's to amend what Ms. Page introduced, to include a one-time twenty-six hundred dollar bonus for all of our two thousand and three instructors, but also, but to provide for it by way of efficiencies identified and...
Well, go ahead and say what they are. Just a quick little one-sentence thing, so we all know what we're talking about here.
Yeah, so they would include, for example, disposing of all of our vacant properties to discontinue payment of six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in utilities for vacant, or largely vacant, facilities. It would include a ser, series of cuts to downtown, to central office. I can identify those now, if it's a pleasure of the, the board. It would include consolidation of summer school buildings, phasing out Aspire Academy. I previously provided, no, 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 that's, that's something, yeah, yeah, something else, yes. Does that help?
Yeah, I didn't know if you were talking about to, to add the bonus to what was already here.
Well, yes, so what I'm proposing is that we would, so what I'm proposing is, on top of the four percent increase, along with a step increase, that additionally, we would provide a one-time bonus for teachers of twenty-six hundred dollars, on top of that four percent increase and step increase. Correct, yes, ma'am, yes, yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Okay, then the motion to amend fails for lack of a second. Mr. Young, and then Mr. Barlow.
Then, Madam Chair, I would move to reduce the proposed budget increase by fifteen millions, fifteen million sixty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars, again, as enumerated in documents previously provided, and that includes the series of budget cuts or reductions to the increase in budget previously provided, to include, for example, what you referenced a moment ago.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? That motion to amend. Any second, that motion to amend fails. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to amend the, the budget to include a one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar line item for, for menstrual supplies for our young ladies given recent state requirements. I appreciate the administration running the, the numbers and expected costs of those supplies this weekend, so we could ensure that, that we're adequately serve, adequately serving our young female students, and also that these supplies aren't coming out of our nursing supplies line items, when I know that our nurses need resources as well.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to amend the motion to approve the budget to add one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for menstrual supply. Is there discussion? Mr. Young?
Just to clarify, we're voting on Mr. Barlow's amendment.
Amendment, or just the amendment?
I just wanted to know where the, the number came from, to, to ensure that it covers...
Gladly so. I'm happy to read this out, if it helps. So it's based on the assumption, and perhaps Ms. Sudasco can also chime in if I misstate anything, it's based on the assumption that there are one hundred and fifteen girls' bathrooms across sixteen middle school and high schools, assuming fifteen bathrooms per school, and that seven are girls' bathrooms per school. It's, assuming that we have six thousand girls in grade six to twelve, who will use five tampons and five pads per month. This is, of course, likely the highest possible amount, I've been assured. And also, to keep some in the nurses' suite for fifth-grade students as well, or elementary students as well. It factors in thirty thousand dollars worth of dispensers, they're roughly two hundred and fifty dollars each, at one per bathroom, and then trash disposal units and liners for stalls, around ten K for the dispenser, and, and there's some specifics with respect to tampons and pads, forty-five thousand for tampons and fifty thousand for pads. And I'm also happy to email this out to, to colleagues now, if you'd like to take a look at these numbers.
Do you want to address that, or you had something?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this amendment? Mr. Young?
I have to say, I'm going to vote for that, but, but I hope we can do a better job of keeping them supplied than we were in the past, keeping toilet paper supplied.
Ms. Cosby?
No, I don't want to talk to the amendment, but I want to talk to just the budget, that's all. I have to, I have a question to ask, because I don't recall this.
Take the vote on this, and then I will come to you.
I was waiting for him to send it over. So the vote is on the amendment to include one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar, a one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar line item for menstrual supplies for our students. The motion was made by Mr. Barlow and seconded by Ms. Door. Ms. Door?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Sapini?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And Ms. Owen?
Yes.
The amendment passes unanimously?
All right, then, that goes to Ms. Cosby, and then Mr. Young.
I want to speak to, can I, Marilla? Sorry. I want to speak to one line item that I'm not sure if we really talked about, the strategy moving forward. So we have a three million dollar, three-point-seven million dollar line item in here to cover the Patrick Henry, the Patrick Henry subsidy. And so we put that in this year, and so did we talk about what is the strategy as we move forward with Patrick Henry? This is, it's under the proposed additional basic needs and adjustments.
Just to clarify, the proposed budget only increases our current allocation to Patrick Henry by...
Oh, the hundred thousand.
By a hundred thousand.
Okay.
So the three-point-seven is what it is currently.
That's what it is currently, okay. I was looking at it like, what in the world? Okay.
Is that, are you good now? Okay. All right, then, Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will vote against this budget. I don't think it'll surprise anybody, when I share that. I, I am excited about our Dreams for RPS. I voted for Dreams for RPS, I support Dreams, Dreams for RPS, and, and to be blunt, I introduced an amendment a moment ago that would have reduced our Dreams for RPS by over fifteen million dollars, but I think it's important to, to note that it's still, for RPS, would have constituted a twenty-eight ballpark, twenty-eight million dollar year-over-year increase. My concern, my concern, twofold. One, largely what some folks in the audience spoke to a moment ago, and I don't think, I don't think it makes a lot of sense, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to, to tilt at windmills, just for us, in a few months, to be back here. tilt at windmills just for us in a few months to be back here and to do the, the real work we could have done now. That's the first point. The second point is that I am disappointed, to be candid, that we are largely undoing or, and/or reversing so much what I would characterize as good work last year. And I understand and recognize that there's difference opinion around this table as it relates to if what we did last year was, was good or not. I'm specifically referring to the cuts to downtown. Again, like I surprise anyone here when I say I think that, that they constituted a real step in the right direction to prioritize our folks in the buildings in lieu of downtown. So for those purposes, I will, I will vote no, and I look forward to, in spring, getting another bite at this apple and adopting some of the reductions I proposed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like, I would like to speak briefly to, to comment that Mr. Young just made, which is about the, the good work that we did last year making cuts to downtown. I found that to be incredibly challenging work last year. I found that to be a work that was unfortunate in, in some respects. I felt as though we were making cuts to prioritize putting resources into the classroom in many respects, but they still weren't cuts that I was happy to make, they were not cuts that I was comfortable with making, and they weren't all cuts that I think benefit the organization to make. And, and I do think it's important that we shouldn't be cutting for cutting sake and that we should be asking for the resources that we need. And I'm thankful in many respects that this year, that's what we're doing. The point is well-taken by a member of the public and others who've suggested that, to use Mr. Young's term, we are tilting at windmills to ask for more than we can reasonably expect from the administration or from the, from the city and from the state. Why, I yet again think that's an unfortunate characterization. Our job as a school board is to advocate for the needs of our school district. Oftentimes, we're, we, we are confronted with the unfortunate circumstance that our funding needs far exceed what we are going to reasonably expect from city council and the mayor and the state this year. That doesn't mean that we don't have an obligation to request those funds, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be setting a starting place so advocates can help us advocate for additional funds, it doesn't mean that we should accept assertions made by certain folks on the city, the city side, that we are, we should expect a certain number and that's all we're going to get. Because our job is to work with the community and work with our teachers and our students and advocates to, to advocate for the resources we know our kids need. And, and I think this budget gets us a lot closer, or moves, moves the needle in many respects, on addressing some of these needs. There were, there are points that I think I'd prefer to be even more ambitious on in some respects. I mean, this, this is calling for a 4% raise for our teachers, and that's an important thing for us to do. I think many of us understand that our teachers need more than that and that they're being paid well under what comparable teachers are in other, other states and other school divisions. This budget calls for additional nurses, but doesn't call for an additional nurse in every school yet, because we understand that in some respects, we do have to be restrained and we have to take the time to scale these things up. This budget calls for additional resources for specialty programs at our schools. It doesn't call for the, for all the magnet programs that we anticipate putting forward in the next couple of years, although I'd love to be able to get the ball rolling on those more dramatically. But what, what I'll say for this budget is that in, in most respects, in my opinion, this is geared towards improving student success, improving teacher success, and improving the situations and the, and frankly, the, the general circumstances of our, of, of our students and teachers and other support folks in, in each of our buildings. So I'm happy to vote for this. It's not the perfect budget. It doesn't prioritize everything at this point. I know we're going to have further discussions about that. I wouldn't be surprised if we don't receive a, a fully funded budget of, a fully funded needs-based budget. I don't think this school division has received a fully phased, a fully funded needs-based budget, and it certainly didn't happen that, that last year, but I, I think we owe it to our kids to fight for one. So I'm looking forward to additional discussions with the city, additional discussions with advocates and our teachers. And then also, I should note, you know, there are, there are components of, of this budget that I think we, we will need more detail on. We will need to see more information about implementing, whether that's with respect to specialty programs coming forward next year, whether that's with respect to how we're handling the transition for students who are, who are, who have been rezoned in their families. And that's our role as a board, and I, and I expect to continue to follow up on that. I know that we're not going to have every question answered immediately, but, but I want to thank my colleagues and the administration for, for working, for working hard on this and for, for continuing to do the work that we're going to have to in the coming months with respect to both our advocacy efforts and finalizing the budget once we know exactly what we're getting from our counterparts on the state level and on the city side.
Just real, just real briefly, I think it's important for me to share, for me, when I ran for office four years ago, I, I spoke to how it's, my va- my value system, my approach is to really, to do something that could be characterized as radical, I suppose, I think it's common sense, but to provide autonomy for our teachers. And I recall when I first used that word subsequent election in Charlottesville, someone who go nameless objected to that word. And, and I will share, everyone in this room knows that I'm referring to that was 2017. For, I reference all the time, I want our folks to be entrepreneurial, which means I want them to be able to take risks, I want them to be able to be unorthodox, I want them to be able to swim upstream, to be champion for failure and recognizing that failure allows for success. So my, my point is, and I don't want what I'm going to say next to be misconstrued because I can appreciate that it would, and specifically because I have all the admiration in the world for our folks in our downtown or central office, I really do, who work extraordinarily hard. But on balance, all things considered, if I'm going to spend money, I, I just, I really believe the rubber hits the road, I'm in the buildings, and for me, I really prioritize folks being able to, to be that, that kind of entrepreneur that, that I described. And my concern is and always has been, though I want to give this superintendent and this administration all the credit in the world, my concern is that culturally enriching public schools for a long time, our challenges pertain to our teachers and all the capability in the world that they have, and all the zeal and the passion in the world that they have, often having their hands tied behind the back in the past. And we're changing that, and I give credit to this, to my colleagues and to this administration. And I see folks being able to do things in a way, I'm referring to our people in the building, in a way that they weren't in the past. But when I speak to cutting downtown, it's not just for cutting sake, it's for me because I really believe that, to be blunt, the fewer people you have in central office, the more autonomy you have for teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief, as usual. I will say that I will agree with Mr. Young, which I have before pertaining to central office. I know that early on, the, the thought was to have less central office because they were going to, you know, work it out essentially. The phrase I would use was working their fingers to the bone, and I, I get that and, but then we're hearing, oh, we, we need to add this person to help this person, that person, so on and so forth, so basically keep adding more and more to central office. That's, that's problematic because was it not the thought through as far as what the needs were in central office? Then the, the level of detail that I feel that we needed with this budget, or even typically whenever we meet, whether it's teachers and vacancies and bus drivers or whatever have you, a lot of questions are either not answered, or when they are answered, it's somewhat late. We only meet twice a month essentially to meet, to have a meeting, and so it would be great to have that information, whatever we're asking for, either at that meeting because we would explore, I would expect that you are the so-called experts, and so you guys would know the answers to our questions, or at least be able to get to us within a reasonable amount of time to make a, you know, a right decision. And so I am still concerned with this budget. Though I was very happy that we seem to have gotten more done in the last meeting than we did throughout the whole process. I was not happy with some of the decisions that seemed like they're going through. But meeting for meeting's sake and providing information at the right time, that's important. If you say you need, let's say, more attendance officers, well, for one, we already knew that, but can we have the data? Can we see what you're seeing so we know? Okay, yes. That's just an example, so. I still like to say that this budget process, or even what's in the budget, is problematic for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say, I'm not going to belabor the point. I've been at this process since '09. We have cut, cut, cut down to the bone, and it's time that we ask for the needs of the district, and the state needs to step up. The city, but again, when we look at our revenue stream, you know, we have to generate, generate a new source of revenue to adequately support the needs of this school district, because right now, we are playing catch-up. You know, this budget supports, and we need far more support. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Barlow. There are so many supports that we need, but we have to start from somewhere. We're seeing an increase, you know, such as, you know, art, music, athletic equipment, just like our student athletes were here in the last board meeting. And express the need for adequate, updated equipment so that they can continue to level the playing field, and also to be safe. We need more nurses, specialty programs, we need to increase routes for transportation. If we truly want to talk about equity, additional AP courses, because again, we have to create a learning environment that our students can, can compete. You know, funding for equitable resources in our priority schools, increasing ESL support. We're playing catch-up. Fact of the matter, because I don't think, again, we cut to the point, we were down to the bones. The state is still lagging behind since 2008. I wish I had a magic wand. That we can, we would get the necessary report, funding, support that we need to support our students and our staff, you know, teachers, bus drivers, the whole gamut. But we have to start from somewhere, and, and I'm looking forward to the next phase of this process, because we're going to have to make some real tough decisions, and we're going to have to prioritize. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I want to also kind of piggyback on what Mr. Sapini, or Dr. Sapini was saying about the process. I too feel like, you know, the work that we did over the past couple of weeks, I just wish that that had started sooner, you know. For instance, I mean, in terms of the substitute teachers, which is something that I feel very strongly about, you know, I mean, that was an ask that was made at the onset, and now, you know, I, I feel incredibly disappointed to recognize that we, I mean, I, I asked for a plan about substitute teachers and we, you know, have a solution in our budget that doesn't address the, the entire problem. And so to, to provide the raise to the, the daily subs, but not look at how, you know, the, the compensation of our long-term subs, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, and I, I have to think that had we done the due diligence sooner, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here right now. So, you know, I'm, I'm really torn, to be frank. There, without a doubt, last year's budget was short-sighted, and now we are looking at, thankfully, fixing some of those mistakes. And there are a lot of things in the budget that I, that I support and that I want to say yes to. You know, I want to say yes to the teacher raises, I want to say yes to the custodian raises, but then with the custodians, I don't know exactly what that line item is getting us in terms of those custodian raises. Likewise, with the assistant principal increases, I don't know if this line item actually solves the problem, and we haven't provided the public with enough information so that they can say, yes, this is the right amount, or no, it's not the right amount, because the information is just not out there. I like the fact that there's funding at Henderson, for Henderson, for the STEM program, but I still don't have the assurance that we are- I still don't have the assurance that we are adequately have the funding to meet the needs of the students that are already at that school. So while last year's cuts were short-sighted, you know, I also feel it is short-sighted that, um, that we, we don't have more detail at this point. You know, not only does the, the, the details for these plans, um, you know, ensure that we've actually budgeted the correct amount, which is critical, but having the plan also ensures that we can actually execute on these plans. And, um, and when you look at where we are in terms of the, the, the spend with what we got last year, um, you know, there, there are reasonable questions to be asked, not all, you know, so it's like, yes, we need the money, but, you know, as our, our auditor said, you know, do we have the capacity to, to spend all of it? So that, that is a concern that I have. I think that, uh, you know, as I said, I mean, there are, there are things that I wanna say yes to, um, but I, I also feel like there's just a lot more work to do. I feel uneasy that we have a budget that includes money for a bookmobile when we still can't hire Spanish teachers because we're not paying them a full-time salary. I feel uneasy that we have a lot of money allocated to outsourced consultants for training programs when we still don't have the funding for, um, you know, a host of other critical needs that the schools have. So, um, I'm really on the fence, um, and what I do hope is that we have another agenda item at our next meeting where we can pick off where we left off today. And so I think that, um, I would ask the administration to go back to the last meeting that we had and capture a list of all of the line items where we were asked for more information that, um, has not yet been, uh, procured and shared with this board, and, um, and we have a truly robust discussion to review that information, um, to ensure that we are serving the city and our constituents and the students of the school system to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Ms. Gibson. Actually, she said the same words I was, I was thinking. I too am torn, um, and this is why I, 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 last year, I kept saying over and over and over again, we cut too deep. Anytime we're gonna go from fourteen attendance officers to seven, uh, when we know that attendance is an issue, when we know that this year, accreditation part of that will be based on attendance, just was, um, counterintuitive. So in many regards, I'm really excited about many things in this budget. Yes, the teacher raises, yes, we've increased our attendance officers, yes, we are supporting our behavior specialists, but I too am very concerned that, um, we have not received information that we did ask for, um, so that we can help to inform, it's not just for us, but to help make the case for, uh, our constituents as well, and as we go and, um, and present this heavy ask. And I too will say that, yes, we are playing catch-up, absolutely, um, but we also have to look at return on investment. And so with this board, we have spent a lot of money on central office, really. And, um, and we have to look at return on investment, and the only way we can do that is by receiving the information that we have asked for, to make sure that certain things are, are working well, and those things that are not, we might have to change course. We don't even know if we have to change course if we have not received the information that we have asked for. So that's problematic. And also, there are certain things in this budget that I, I've said previously, that I can't really wrap my head around, and one of them, and I don't know, because I'm, I'm, I'm really not a, I'm not a finance person, I'm just a layperson. So when we talk about budget adjustments for positions and for salaries, that is problematic, because we have a budget, and we have a budget for a reason. And if we just, with too many positions, just go above and beyond what is budgeted, and that, that presents a huge, in my opinion, presents a huge problem. I know it presents a huge problem for me when I go, when I say I have a particular budget, 'cause I wanna buy these shoes, and I go above and beyond, and then I know my next paycheck, I have to play catch-up. And so that means I might be robbing Peter to pay for, and that's what I feel like we have done with this. That piece of it is extremely problematic, and no matter which way this budget goes, I think as a board, we have to decide how we are gonna hold ourselves accountable and the administration accountable with these things, and what are the things that we need in order to do that?
The motion was made by Mrs. Page to approve the superintendent's proposed FY twenty-one budget and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five CIP budget, and to add a one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar line item for menstrual supplies for students. Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Abstain.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Dr. Sapini?
Abstain.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Wait a minute. Now, where'd you get sixty?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barlow, you said yes, right?
I did indeed.
Okay. Right.
Uh, I, I did wanna follow up on Ms. Gibson's point about trying to have continued discussions at our next meeting. I know that we're, we're gonna continue with priority, prioritization discussions moving forward, but I do think, um, anything we can do, especially at this point in the process, to provide more clarification related to our budget is going to be helpful as we continue to advocate, uh, and want to push things to, um, council and to work with our supporters. So I would like to continue discussions as soon as possible, uh, as soon as possible with our given schedule.
This special meeting is adjourned.